Okay, folks, we're gonna get started. Have fun. Victoria, can you mute those people who are not muted for us until we're ready for them? It's Ms. Campania, Mr. Macho, and Mr. Kaufman. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Hold on, Michael, not yet. All right, that's right. It just says recording, not started. Sorry. Evening to everyone who's joining us tonight. Welcome to the April 21st meeting of the Hyde Park Planning Board. Before I open the meeting fully, let me note that this is conducted by, authorized by Governor Cuomo's Executive Order 202.1, last extended as 202.9, which allows virtual meetings of public officials. Let me first confirm that each board member is alone. Ms. Weiser?
I'm alone.
Ms. Wasser?
I am alone.
Mr. Pickett?
I'm alone.
Mr. Oliver?
I'm alone.
Ms. Denapoli?
I'm alone.
Vice Chair Dexter?
I'm alone.
And to repeat or reiterate, this, I'm confirming they're alone so that we know that there's no one there attempting to influence how they would vote or speak tonight. Please join me as we salute the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag.
The United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is a new public hearing for Nori Park Estates. First, let me turn this over to Victoria Polidora, our attorney, for some notes and comments.
Yes, hi, everyone. Good evening. I just wanted to go over the rules of conduct and procedure for public hearings before the planning board. You know, the planning board has adopted this as part of its bylaws, and it's been some time since we've reminded the public about the rules. So speakers will be called on and recognized by the chair. Speakers are asked to limit their remarks to five minutes, and all comments should be addressed to Chairman Dupree. So we're not, it's not a conversation or back and forth with the applicant. The planning board is here to take your comment and to listen to your comment. Speakers should not expect a dialogue with the board in response. Speakers should not expect a dialogue with the board in response to these questions. We are also asking that speakers observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decency, dignity, and respect. You know, personal remarks against an individual are not acceptable. All remarks should be limited to the project and its potential impacts. If issues arise that are outside the scope of the subject of the hearing, persons who are speaking will be asked to cease their comments. We are going to, you know, we will issue one warning, but after that, people may be removed from the meeting if you don't abide by these rules. Happy to answer any questions. I don't think we're gonna have any issues, but again, just reminding everyone because we haven't done that in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Victoria. Make it a motion to open this public hearing.
So moved. And Dexter?
Second. And Weiser?
On your favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. So to sum up, this is an older subdivision that was approved quite some time ago. On one particular lot, this would be Lot 1, there was a driveway that was intended to be located in one area during construction. It was relocated. The driveway, as relocated, would not conport with our code because it would open, the exit and entry would be at the center of a three-way intersection. Our code requires that a driveway entrance be located 60 feet from that intersection, the center line of that intersection. We had a meeting onsite two Sundays back. I want to thank all the board members and the consultants, Mr. Stokosa, Mr. Macho, the intended owner, Brian, for joining us. There was much discussion and examination of the site. What was basically concluded is that the easement for the drainage over the drainage swale would be the shorter version, or 20 feet from the end of the pipe heading south. The, also, the swell must be cleaned out with four-inch rock install prior to signing, my signing it, and it should be eight to 10 inches deep. As we all noticed right there, what's there right now, there's a different size rock, some sediment that's gotten into it, so it's preventing the swell from working as perfectly, I'll call it, as intended. But that's basically it, and the driveway will be relocated. There was further discussion. We noticed that there were some pipes from Lot 1 that seemed to be emptying onto Lot 2 into the swell. We didn't see any approvals or easements for that, so that may become an issue tonight. But that more or less sums up what we discovered that day, and again, thanks to all the board members for giving up part of their Sunday afternoons. So before I open up for public comment, let me start with our consultants, and so I'll start with Ms. Moss. Tad?
I believe that the drawings are in order, and that, I think the easement language still needs, does the easement language still need to be worked on, Victoria, to review it?
We've advised the applicant's attorney of what is needed, and they responded that they were working on it, but we have not received anything yet for review.
Okay, thank you. I think it's, I think it's the best solution to the situation that the town could hope for. So, you know, pending the board's deliberation, I think all the paperwork is in order.
We received a new, a new document from Mr. Stokosa. It's shown right now on the screen. Mr. Stokosa prepared this based on comments that he heard from the Sunday meeting. And you can see the relocation of the driveway. You can also see the location of the original driveway, which is shown in the dotted lines. And you can also see where the easement is located close to Pond View and Endrick Hill Drive, as I said, the first 20 feet. I should also have added that there are, this, this swell is actually the location of a prior natural drainage swale to a certain extent. And if you go further up Pond View Court, some of the stormwater that would start up there has been deflected, put into stormwater drains that head down Pond View Court, and then ultimately enter into a stormwater detention pond, located at Pond View and Endrick Hill on the northeast side of that intersection. Everything seemed to be flowing well up there. Mr. Sotero, our engineering consultant, had looked at it, along with Tad, before even started the meeting. So what you see here, what you would see into the swell is a bit of what's left over because of the steep slopes that surround, that are hot, excuse me, that surround the swell. As you go south, it climbs pretty steeply. Again, there wasn't a lot of regrading up there, so what you're seeing is what's left of what would be a natural drainage swell, then rechanalized here going down. Ms. Moss, that's all your comments. Then let me go to Mr. Sotero, Pete?
I don't really have too much more to add without being able to see the map. I, did they add an additional backup area coming out of the garage for Lot 1?
No.
Doesn't appear to be shown. Mr. Stokosa, I can let, when I call on you, I can, well, Brian, do you have an answer for that? Is there going to be any additional backup from the driveway?
If the board wants that, I was, I wasn't sure how that was left in the field, but if that's the intent of the board, then we will certainly show it.
I believe it was the intent of the owner.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah, yes.
Well, it's not a requirement.
Really the intent of the owner.
Correct. It's not a requirement. I've had discussions with the owner, with the purchaser, and we're talking about what we're gonna do.
Okay, well, Bob, Bob, if you're gonna be, if you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, show it on the map. If it's, if it's not on the map, then it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be widened after the fact. So if we're gonna do it, let's just do it now. All right?
Okay.
All right. And then the only other thing was, I don't know if Brian had detailed, you know, the swell in terms of, you know, the cross-section of it, and, you know, the riprap and the depth of it, but I can always go work that out if it's not, you know, on there yet, so.
Yeah, Pete, what I can do is I can, I can detail that. We can formalize it and make it as record on the plan. The revisions that I made, since you can't see it, is we showed like basically the two easement areas, one to be maintained by the town, one to be maintained by the individual lot owner on Lot number 1. I provided notation for the open space to be demarcated as per the intent of the original filed map. And then we also placed some topo on where the relocated driveway is gonna be. We also provided some spot elevations to show a negative pitch coming off of vendor kill drive, so there's no, no water coming off the town road.
So Pete, I have a question for you because they, this map identifies the two drainage areas, but this, the drainage area that the town is gonna have the right, but not the obligation to maintain, is still shown at 20 feet wide with the driveway going through it? And when we were in the field, it looked like it could be much smaller, like it, so that the driveway wasn't in the easement area? I know you can't see what, the line there, but I think.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we don't need to have, we don't need to, but that's not, is that gonna, are we gonna take a formal, a formal easement on that? Or that was just gonna be a note on a map?
No, we're taking a formal easement.
So now we're gonna, so now we're, so now we are gonna have an easement that goes all the way up, basically to the same spot that it did before?
Well, I guess it needs to, yeah, it is. It's gonna be requiring the homeowner to clean it, and if he doesn't take care of it and there's a problem, the town will have the right, but not the, not the obligation to go in and, and fix that drainage issue.
But right now, as shown on the map, I'm looking at it, it is wide, and it does cover a portion of the old driveway that's going to be removed, but it stops just at the corner of where the relocated driveway is curving in.
No, it includes the new driveway, though, Michael. Look, because the driveway goes.
Well, I mean, hon, I mean, you know, honestly, if, I mean, if the town ever did go in and maintain it, which, you know, I doubt that'll happen, but if it ever did, they would actually have to use the driveway on Lot number 1, you know, to access it, because they need something hard, you know, to drive over to get to it. So if we're gonna, if we're gonna have that easement, I don't have an issue with being, being over the driveway.
Well, we, we need to go over the, the new driveway. The question that I'm having, and I, maybe we'll just take this discussion offline and do it when you can see the map, is whether the easement area should be narrowed so it's just the ditch. So we'll, we'll continue that conversation.
But how would the town, I mean, yeah, we should have that offline, but I mean, really, how would the, if it's, if it's narrowed to just the width of the ditch, you know, unless it's gonna be limited to guys being able to go in there with shovels, you know, or something, then that would, then that would be okay. But if the town ever had to try to get a piece of equipment, then that wouldn't like suffice. So you know what, you know what, Victoria, we can go deal with that ourselves. We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Terry, do you have control? Can you, can you show where you're showing that the, can you show us where the easement is crossing the driveway or encompassing the driveway?
Right now, he has the easement going this wide, this. So that would be the easement where the town would have the right to go in. And then the driveway goes like this through it. So when we went out to the site, the, you know, the drainage thing is really just on the side right here. So I think we only need the easement over the drainage ditch here with the right of access over the driveway. But it, it's up to Pete.
I believe, unless I'm, it's hard for me to read on my screen, but I thought that it said that the owner would maintain that area in red, and the town has access to it, so it could then clean. So it's an access easement, if I'm right.
Okay, so then, so then it's fine. We don't need to make a mountain.
Drainage easement, in other words, is just that first 20 feet, and there's an access easement past that that's shown in the, there you go.
Correct.
But the obligation will be on the owner of Lot 1, unless it's not maintained, the town has the right to access it to further clean it. Would that be, is that acceptable?
Yeah, that's, that's.
That's something for you and Mr. Stanger to work out, the applicant's attorney, I know.
Okay.
Any other comments, Mr. Sotero?
Nope, good, thank you.
Thank you. And Victoria, any other comments from you?
I have no other comments.
Then let me start with the board. Ms. Wasser, any comments? Stephanie?
I apologize, I was on mute. No, I don't have additional comments. I went out there and walked, and I think pending the easement resolution, I think the two-foot contours helped, you know, to show the grade toward Endrick Hill, so I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Weiser?
I have nothing to add to the conversation.
Mr. Oliver?
No new comments, thank you.
Mr. Pickett?
I had looked at it the Friday before from the street, and I just concur with what everybody is, you know, get a resolution for easements. I would say that with all this being done, there's about a 20% reduction in the basketball compared to the original proposal, so a little bit of a benefit after we get it all done.
Thank you very much, Brian. Those are good comments. Ms. Denapoli, any additional comments?
This one, it's more of a question. While the president or the new, new owner said that he would take care of the squall, the area, what happens when he goes to sell and there's another owner?
So he runs with the land, and it's gonna bind all future owners? But I want to be clear that he's only gonna have the obligation to maintain the swell as it pertains to his property line.
Correct.
Any portion of the swell on Lot 2, he does not have the obligation to maintain.
Right. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. And Vice Chair Dexter?
I guess my only comment is I just want to make sure that this, this view, whatever changes that get made are, that they don't, nobody has to come back and change anything. So I would, if there's any widening of the driveway up at the top for a turnaround, I would like to see that and just make sure that it's there. Get it all done, one and done.
Good idea. Thank you.
Chairman, I, I do have another question.
Yes.
When this was expanded, I can see that there's a pipe shown now, a two-to-four-inch PVC pipe into the swell. And do we want a notation, I mean, showing it sort of shows that it's allowed? Or do we want a notation that says no approval is granted for this, or this is not part of the project?
I think that's an excellent note to have added on. I've been just a coast, can add that on as well, could be a condition of approval.
Absolutely, guys.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board or consultants? Let me open this up to the public. I believe the first person who signed up was Kathy Campania, the neighbor and owner of Lot 2, and I believe Lot 9. Ms. Campania, welcome. Can you unmute yourself and make comments?
Could you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, how are you guys?
We're good. Hope you are, too.
I am, too. As far as the swell on my property? You, you hear what I'm saying?
Yes, ma'am.
I do not want Mr. Macho on my property cleaning out the swell until the pipes that he pointed out to the board are rectified, that, that I have now have a problem with.
Gee, can you explain what you mean by the pipes are rectified?
No. Pete Sodaro knows what I'm talking about. I don't want to elaborate it. All I'm saying is, I had agreed two days ago to Ms. Moss and Mr. Sodaro that I would let Mr. Macho clean out the swell and make it nice. They told me what kind of rocks and seating. And then not four minutes later, they found a problem on my property. So now I'm gonna rectify my problem, but I don't want no one on my property. I don't want Mr. Macho to touch that swell until everything I feel is corrected on my end. Because I don't want to elaborate, but thanks to him, I have the problem on my property, so. So I have no one to work on my property, and the swell is on my property, which I never knew was there till Tad, Ms. Moss, and Mr. Sodaro pointed it out, because I don't walk around, you know, all over the place. And now I know it's there, so. And as far as the driveway, it's in the wrong spot. That, that's not my doing. It's Mr. Macho's doing, so.
I think we can, we can certainly agree on that. That is Macho doing, and yes, it's relocated incorrectly. I do need to point out for the record that Mr. Macho did speak with the highway superintendent, who indicated that it would be okay with him, because he has to authorize.
I heard all about that.
At the time, Mr. Superintendent Fisher, our highway superintendent, did not know that that intersection would be illegal under our code because it was not 60 feet from the center line. So that's been rectified as best as possible, and for whatever reason it was done, and I think it's had to do with the new owner's request to have a side-loaded garage instead of a front-loaded. It's happened, and so of course, tonight, what we're here to do is try to take care of all these things so that the new owner can move in and take care of any other problems. As I said, we won't get into specifics, but I will leave it to Victoria at some point to figure out how we would, how it would be noted. Maybe we even need to note that Mr. Macho is not allowed on the, on Ms. Campania's property.
I don't want the swell touched until my problem is rectified.
So, but, but Ms. Campania, here's the issue.
Yeah.
He doesn't have to go on your property, but that means that the swell on your portion of the property is gonna continue. If you look at it, it's, it's not right. It's over.
No, but, but let me interject a minute. When I spoke to Ms. Moss and Mr. Sodaro, they said he was gonna make it nice, and he's gonna put nice rocks. But then, I don't want him working on my property, because like I said, four minutes later, they seen two drain pipes on my property that they insisted was wrong, and there was a problem, so now I have to fix that. So I don't want him working on my property until I, I fix what I have to fix.
Okay, but I just want you to understand that the outcome of that is that he's not gonna fix that portion of the swell.
That's what they told me when they were here two days ago.
But, but we can't force him on your property, so the leverage to get him to fix that is approving this application. So once this application is approved, then that's it. The town has no more authority to request him to fix your swell.
But I don't want to take care of the swell. Not my problem.
Well, the swell's on your property, so it.
But doesn't it belong to the town originally?
It does not, no.
How come we never mentioned the swell before? How come we never had, heard anything in four and a half years about that swell? It's full of broken trees. It's full of garbage, rocks, all kinds of debris.
So, you know, this comes up a lot. The town, you know, has very limited resources. They don't drive around looking for problems. They only become aware of problems often, you know, when they become of a, become aware of an issue, and they go out and they do an inspection.
I understand that.
Right.
But when they came here Monday, Ms. Moss and Mr. Sodaro, this is what they talked about with us, that Mr. Macho was gonna have to do the whole swell to get this moving, so these people could get their CO and move in, and everything's gonna be great. He's got other things to do around the property. And behind the house, there's like a, a swimming pool that, that's gonna bring mosquitoes if somebody doesn't fix that soon. If you go there now, it looks like there's a miniature pond back there.
Okay, so if you don't want, if you don't want him on your property, then he's just gonna fix the portion of the swell on Lot 1, and that's the best that we can do.
But I think it's on Lot 2, but I'm just saying.
But, but he won't be able to do that.
If you're denying him access, Ms. Campania, he can't have access. That's the way the law works.
Okay, but I don't have to be responsible for, for the swell, then.
Well, you're responsible for it in as much as it's your property.
Yeah, but I didn't put all that stuff in there. He did. There's trees, broken trees, there's rocks, there's all kinds of construct, all debris.
I, I understand, but if you want him to remove it, you have to give him permission to do that.
I know that, but I still don't understand. What was the purpose of them coming here two days ago, telling me this would expedite this? Oh, you understand what I'm saying? I'm confused on this whole thing.
So, look.
At first.
I'm gonna try to make it easy. If, if you don't, if you don't give permission right now on the record for him to go onto your property, then he's not gonna go on your property. If you give permission, then as a requirement, a condition of this approval, we're gonna tell him to go clean it up and fix it. It's, it's that.
That's the whole swell. That would include your portion as well, Ms. Campania, so he fixed the whole swell. And I want to point out, no, what I want to point out is, is that the only thing that I believe that Mr. Sotero and Ms. Moss discussed is, in terms of your main, so where, the portion of the swell that's on your property, again, that was a natural swell at the time. So what they, all they ask you to do is, when you, we say maintain, it's, don't dump into it, because if you dump, then it changes the pattern of the water as it flows down, and may not go into the portion of the swell that's on Lot 1. So if you just don't, don't dump anything in there, it should be fine. In other words, that'd be the extent of your maintenance, would be just not dumping into it.
And the reason I'm confused, because in the beginning, when this all started, they came to me and they wanted 10 feet of my property. For what reason, I still don't know.
It was, it was going to be, it was going to be included in that portion of, in other words, it was going to be included so the town could go further up in case the swell got into problems on your parcel. But if you don't want that to happen, then that's not going to happen, because we can't compel that, in other words. You're, you already have a lot that's subdivided, and you live there, and so that's, if you wanted to voluntarily say you can have an easement on 10 feet up, then we can make it that way, but if you don't, then we're not going to.
And that's why I'm confused with this, because that was the first approach, give up 10 feet, and now it's this, now the swell. I don't know where we're going with all this.
Nobody is asking you to give up any property. This application is for the movement of a driveway. And so as part of that, we want Mr. Macho to clean up the swell. If you don't want him to do that on your property, then that's the end of our question.
Okay, but I'm not, I, the swell should be fine if he don't touch it, right?
Well, it would work better if the debris was removed and the proper rocks were laid in.
It would look better also. I mean, it's just, right now, it's, right now, it's like a mess. And if he doesn't, if he doesn't clean it up as part of the work on Lot 1, then we have, and then we have no obligation to make him come back and finish cleaning up on Lot, Lot number 2. So it would be much better if he just did it all now and make it, and make it look nice. But that's really, that's really up, that's, that's really up to Kathy.
Well, like my husband just stated behind me, he doesn't do anything. I just drove home now, and the road is full of giant rocks. Why don't you come look at that? I just ran over big rocks with my SUV. They're in the road. I'll take a picture and put it on the camera right now. There's rocks all over the road. Does he maintain this road?
Well, so we want to just stay on the subject of this hearing.
I understand that. I understand.
Yeah.
But I'm saying that the debris wouldn't all be in the swell if he had cleaned up a little as he went. No, he just kept dumping. There's tree stumps. I mean, Taz saw it Monday. Am I correct, Taz? He saw it. It's a disaster.
Tad, you're muted.
Well, like we told Kathy, Kathy, like we, like, like we had told you Monday.
Yes.
We will make sure, we will make sure that the swell is cleaned up, because that will be part of, of the town granting the certificate of occupancy for Lot number 1. So we will, we will ensure the swell is cleaned up, you know, it's seeded, it's got the nice, like, stone in it. It all like looks, you know, nice, and he has to go do that before the town will grant a CO for Lot number, number 1.
Okay, so the swell is not cleaned up correctly, there'll be no CO issued? Is that what you're saying?
Absolutely.
No.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Only if you grant permission for him to go onto your lot. And we'd really like you to do that now on the record, or not do it on the record, because we don't want any question moving forward. You know, we don't want to have him trespassing if you don't want him there. So we just want a clear answer either way.
So if I say no, there's no CO, or if I say yes, there is a CO?
No.
No, no, no. He would still get a C, Kathy, he would still get a CO as long as he cleans up the portion that's just on Lot 1. In other words, if you agree for him to go onto your land, then there'd be no CO until the whole swell is cleaned up. If you do not agree, then he would get a CO only when the portion of Lot 1 is done, the lower portion.
And when does he start, and my husband said?
Uh, that would be, I will ask Mr. Macho.
As soon as possible, I think. I mean, it has to be, if they want a CO by the end of May, which is the timeline, we understand they're on, it would have to happen soon.
The developer is seeking financing, so it'd have to be done pretty quickly in order for him to close.
So he has to clean it, and he has to start right away?
I wouldn't say like tomorrow, but he definitely, I mean, I'll have to, he'd have to clean it up, yes.
In the next few weeks.
In the next few weeks.
All right. I don't know. I don't know what to do here, but the issue. But the issue with my pipes, that's another thing. So now, if because of all this mess he created, which I'm going to say he created, which is normal, he created it. Now I have a problem with two drain pipes draining water. I mean, it's ridiculous.
So.
If he done this right in the first place, we wouldn't be having this conversation.
Those pipes are not part of this application and there's going to be.
That.
On the plan stating that, you know, no approval is given for those pipes?
I understand that, but like I said before, I first was in agreeance to help and then all of a sudden I got jammed up with two drain pipes. It was like ironic how it happened four seconds later.
And I apologize for that, but, but none of us ever saw those and they weren't on the original plans to be approved. So that's something that they, they saw on the field.
Two weeks ago, you saw him and you wrote, there was water draining. And Mr. Macho told you they were tree drains. Where he came up with that, I'll never know. And, and now two days ago, they finally turned into a sewer drain, which they're not. So I don't know. I'm more confused than I've ever been living here.
I, you gave more detail that you probably didn't want to at first. But when I was there, I did not observe an odor, but I also saw the water trickling out. And I did hear Mr. Macho say that this was from a French drain for the trees, the evergreens that were installed. But.
I could want to ask him how he thought that one up because I, nobody told him that.
Well, again.
Well, we'll do, we'll deal with that separately. That's, that's a separate issue.
Okay, okay.
So just, just Ms. Campagna, I don't mean to harp on this, but I just don't have a clear answer because we want to be able to advise Mr. Macho. Are you going to allow him to come and clean your swell on Lot One, on Lot Two, or not?
So if he cleans the swell, they get the CO quicker, right?
No, it has nothing to do with, if you don't let him on, they still get their CO.
So let him do whatever he wants. Are you going to come and check to see if he did it right?
Yes, we will, Kathy. Yes, we are going to do that.
Okay, because if history repeats itself, I could pretty much tell you how it's going to go.
No, it's not. No, it's not. We will be like checking it. Ted and I will have to, will have to sign off on it.
Correct, correct.
So you are giving permission.
What? Say that again?
You are giving permission.
Give him the permission. Let's see how this turns out.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Campagna. I really do appreciate that. I think it's going to help, I think it's going to help your property too, in other words, to have it all cleaned up.
I guess it is. There's another drain draining into the swell from up the hill. So you gotta, you, you, you gotta, you, you gotta look at all the drains coming too, you know? And then one question for Peter Sidera. Um, you said that the easement is going to be at the end of the road and then it's going to go into Lot Nine, the storm drain? The storm water, what is Lot Nine's pond? You said it the other day.
Stormwater detention pond.
You own it. Yeah, it's a, it's a storm, it's a stormwater detention pond that, uh, that the town has an easement on and that whenever the town takes over the road, the town will also assume the responsibility for the maintenance of that pond.
So if there, if there's anything in it, they'll clean it or whatever?
That's, yes, yes, that's correct.
I will no longer be.
The idea is to prevent pollution from entering the pond.
Right.
Okay. More pollutants, she said.
Like, like silt and sediment and.
You don't want, you don't want sand or dirt going into the pond because then it fills it up and it won't function like it's supposed to, you know, retain the stormwater until it drains down slowly.
Yeah. Well, yeah, the pond is always full of water. It goes somewhere.
That's what I was going to say. It's designed to keep a certain level unless it gets droughty. So that it, so that the water comes into a high volume, but then it stays there and is slowly released. So that's why I was saying it'll, it'll help the looks of your, of your Lot One, or Lot Two, I'm sorry. It would also help the function of the stormwater pond on Lot Nine. I know that, that, by the way, it's a nice water feature to have if you have a house there.
I'm building a house there.
I walked over it. The pond looks really nice, I have to say. It's, it's working well.
My husband mowed the lawn around it. We take care of what we have. My house is very nice.
It looked nice and I saw the riprap. There's a, there's a swell there as well that carries water down from Lot Nine itself, down into the pond itself too.
Oh, I didn't know that. I haven't walked it yet.
You can see, you'll see, the riprap is the big stone that you can see. It kind of, it circles like a, it moves like a snake. The way it works, it's very curvy. It's very curvy, but I could see it there as well.
Okay. Like I said, I didn't really walk around a lot. I'm a city person and, you know, I stick to my house. That's it.
Welcome to the country.
Yes, welcome to the country. A lot, a lot of enlightening I got tonight. All right.
Yeah, it's not like the city where we have central sewer, central water, et cetera. It's very different up here with your septic systems, et cetera.
So. Oh, can I bring something up real quick that? Okay, on Lot Nine, I own Lot Nine. Yous know this. There's a sign there. I want it taken down. It's not my sign, it's Mr. Macho's. I want Norrie Parker Estates to stay. I don't want Tree Line Builders up there anymore.
So, Ms. Campagna, that would be a private issue between you and Mr. Macho.
Okay, even though I own the property?
I mean, you should consult the, your attorney and they can advise you of your rights with respect to that sign. I don't.
I would read Norrie Parker Estates because that's the name of the development. So people could find us. But the Tree Line Builders sign, I don't need there.
Okay, so talk with your attorney and, you know, they'll let you know if, if you have the right to take that sign down or not.
Why don't you ask Mr. Macho? He's on the, he's on the chat here.
No, that's because this is, this is, the sign is not part of this public hearing.
All right.
Public hearing. But Ted, real quickly, is that a temporary sign or is that a permanent sign? Do you know?
Um, I believe it's a real estate development sign and the Tree Line Builders, I think, is the sub sign. Um, and I believe it's a exempt sign for contractors.
As long as there's work going on.
Yeah, and I'm not sure, um, the exact location of it. I don't know if it's in the right of way or whether it's on, actually on the lot.
It's on the lot. It's right in the middle, right on the lot in the grass.
What Ted's talking about is that there's a, there's a right of way ultimately that the town would have. It's, I believe, 15 feet from the center line of a road, i.e. Endrick Hill. So if it's out, if it's past that, then it's on your private property. And it's within that 15 feet from the center line, then it'd be on Town Road. And I believe it's allowed under our code. And when I say temporary, what I should say is it's not a permanent sign because it's only supposed to be up while construction's going on.
And it's 25 feet from the center line.
25 feet, sorry, not 15. Shoot me.
So I could, so I could take it down.
I would consult your attorney first just to make certain, measure it, et cetera.
Said 15 feet from the center line.
25 feet. 25.
25.
Oh, it's 25 from the center point.
Yep, that was my error. I apologize.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Campagna. Thank you, Ms. Campagna. And you're free to raise these issues anytime also by calling the, the planning and zoning office.
Yes, I know.
Next person who signed up is Mr. Steigerwald. If he's still here.
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Okay, um, so I, I, thank you. I mean, I want to thank everybody again for all the, their help with this. And the only question I have right now is for extending the driveway up at the house, there seemed to be some confusion about who would do that, how it would be done. And, and my understanding, based on the last planning board meeting, and I discussed this also with Mr. Sotero at the Sunday visit, was my understanding is that all we needed for this application was just to show it on the application. Um, and I, I just, I want to make sure that my understanding is clear. Meaning it, it, we want to show it on the application so that way it's done. Whether or not the work gets done now or in the future is not part of the application. Is that correct?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we would want it, want it shown on the map, um, now so that, uh, if you did want to do it later on, you know, you, you know, you could do it later on. But I, I mean, I don't, I mean, if you're, if you're planning on doing it now, now, now is the time to do it while, um, while Mr. Macho's going to have a paper there to pave the other, the other section of the driveway. But that's up to you.
Okay.
Ted, will it be noted as a future expansion, authorized?
Oh, that's a good point. Yeah, that's a good point.
Can it be noted as a future expansion, authorized?
I think so.
We could probably get away with that.
Yeah, we could do that.
I don't understand why you wouldn't want it done now.
Well, I, I'm just trying to help get this.
You want to get your CNO.
Approved as well as get the work done. And if that's something that doesn't need to be done right away, then we can wait. But I know the, the other end of the driveway needs to be done. I would love for it to be done now, but if it becomes an issue for us getting into the house, I take care of it later. That's, that's the only reason why I'm offering that.
I believe Mr. Stokosis can. Go ahead, Pete.
You know, I mean, I think, I think, Chris, that's just a, I think you just need to go work that out, you know, with Bob. And if you guys like agree that it's going to be done like now, then just go do it now.
Okay.
That's really up to you.
If it's not, then Mr. Stokosis should show it on the plans and just put paved drive, existing condition, and then poss, potential future expansion of drive, something like that, and just outline it.
Right, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I'll discuss that with Mr. Macho.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Steigerwald?
Uh, no, thank you.
Uh, no one else signed up to speak about this application, I believe, Councilman Krepnik?
You are correct, sir.
Thank you. So, um, there's going to be a lot of work to do on the resolution, but I'd like to get a motion to close the public hearing with the proviso that additional written comments can be submitted for seven days.
I make that motion? I'll second that motion. And Dexter?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Everyone in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 No, it's unanimous. So we'll work this out in a resolution for the next meeting. I will put this on for our May 5 Cinco de Mayo meeting. And we'll just very carefully work it through. And in the meantime, I know Victoria is working with Mr. Stanger, Mr. Macho's attorney, to try to get the easement language done as quickly as possible. And I want to thank both Ms. Campagna, thank you for speaking, as, and Mr. Steigerwald as well. And we'll see, well, you're, there'll be no public speaking at the next meeting, but you're welcome to attend on May 5. So thank you. The next item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Crofton Muse. This is, the public hearing is actually on the extension of site plan deadlines to complete, to start and complete construction. As has been discussed before, the public hearing is only on that issue. So that's all we're discussing. But I did want to just sort of summarize by pointing out that we have been treating this as though it's necessary to have an amended site plan rather than just extend what's there now. And the reason for that is because it seems silly, if not impossible, to extend the time they have to complete construction when they, all their permits to actually start construction have expired. So what we ask applicants to do is to show some sort of progress that they're moving forward onto ultimately making the modified site plan application, amended site plan. So just to outline, we've received a draft full environmental assessment form, a Blenning's Turtle assessment report, an Indiana Bad Assessment Report, a copy of a meeting discussion notes they had, the applicants had with Dutchess County Water and Wastewater Authority on March 4. They've also given us a draft impact comparison matrix. It's not completed, but it shows the originally, or rather, the last approved plan with the newer approved plan because the newer approved plan has shrunk the number of drilling units by 69, I believe it is. We also have a preliminary modified engineered site plan set and architectural drawings. There's also progress mentioned in the narrative on other matters. There's going to be work on a new traffic impact analysis. Crofton Boulevard is being sort of relooked at, reexamined to see if there's probably ways to reduce the costs, the bridge, et cetera. Um, and they're looking, they're working on an MOU with DCWWA on the water and sewer. They are projecting that based on all that, that they would have a full applicant, a more complete submission available for the July 21 meeting. So that noted, let me get a motion to reopen the public hearing.
Tom, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Thank you. The motion carries unanimously. Let me turn it over to Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Rudikoff. They're both here in attendance. Is there anything you'd like to add or did I summarize anything incorrectly? Matthew and Lou, you have to unmute yourself. Selves.
Well, I'm unmuted. Lou, are you going to, um, make some introductory comments or George?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. I think you summarized it very well. You, if you'd like, you can come on the side of the dais and please join us because you're a pretty good member of the team. But, uh, no, what you said was pretty accurate. We've put in a lot of effort. Matt has put in a, you know, put together a nice package for us. Uh, we are looking at, uh, many parts of the hole. Uh, as you know, we're trying to get at least Phase One continued, which was the first 96 units. They have a substantial amount of improvements. However, uh, we are looking at a variety of more efficient methods. It's going to be a much cleaner project now. The project is, um, smaller, but I think, uh, better. Uh, and it will ultimately have much less of an impact on the property. There's going to be much more pervious surface, uh, but, you know.
Much less pervious surface.
Less pervious.
I'm sorry, impervious. Sorry, yeah, she said it right. More pervious, yeah, sorry.
Less impervious. So take your pick. Check both boxes. Um, but, um, uh, so, so we are not yet prepared to put a final submission together. We're putting all the parts together and based on just the effort and the time it takes and all of the reports and the experts that we have gathered, it just is daunting, the timing. And so we need to, we, we will need more time and we appreciate it. If you would give that to us, you can see the effort we've put in so far, so.
I don't think you're going to hear any. I don't think you're going to hear anything from any of the board members saying that we can't do the, extend this out further, the public hearing. I should also add so that all board members know and members of the public. Uh, there's a funny sound coming through like a bullfrog. Anyway, um, so that members of the public. Members of the public know as well as the board members. Uh, we have an offline meeting, as we call it, scheduled with the applicants to go over the new materials they submitted because tonight's not the appropriate time because this is a public hearing on what exists there now, now which we proposed. So after our next agenda meeting on the 28th, we're going to have a meeting with the applicants to go through all the new materials that I just mentioned. We'll, we'll discuss that in depth and I'll have someone take notes, if not me, to send out to the rest of the board so they can be apprised and everything. But you all have received the new materials as well. Matthew, did you want to add anything?
Well, only that we really appreciate the opportunity of, of having this review of our draft materials because that means that when we do make our final submission in July, it will be that much more complete, that much more complete and make this process run smoothly. So thank you for that logical process of dealing with this situation.
Always. We try to work as closely as possible with applicants to ensure that we have the best development possible for our community. Um, would Mr. Brandt or Mr. Rico like to comment before I open this up to our consultants?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman, uh, we do appreciate the board, uh, being willing to consider, uh, extending this and also having, uh, the offline dialogue with us, as Matthew said, so we can, uh, present a, a full and complete application with all the materials that, uh, uh, the board, uh, needs to, uh, look at and consider, uh, the project. So we appreciate, uh, the time and the courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was George, by the way.
Thank you.
Dominic wants to add to that, but, uh.
No, I'm, I'm good. Just here to answer any specific questions you might have.
That would be probably for the next meeting, the offline meeting. So let me start with consultants. Ms. Franson, any comments?
Not at this time. I'm going to be looking at the materials in advance of our workshop.
Yes, that's what I figured. Mr. Sotaro, any comments?
Same thing. Thank you.
Ms. Moss?
I'm with them.
And Ms. Polidaro?
No comments at this time.
Okay, let me start with the board members. Mr. Pickett? And Ms. Wasser?
No comments.
Vice Chair Dexter?
No comment.
Mr. Oliver?
No comments.
Ms. Weiser?
I also have no comment.
Okay, and Ms. De Napoli? You're still muted, Diane. Diane, you're still muted?
I was trying really hard to come up with a comment just to break the flow. And all I could come up with was no comment. Sorry.
They will know by the vote, but I want to go on the record then with my own comment that I believe that the applicants have shown sufficient progress, that they're working hard. I mean, I rattled off actually just some of what they actually submitted. There was even more in the narrative, so I was trying to summarize quickly. So obviously, they're moving with good intent to get this project going forward, so I see no reason why we wouldn't extend this to the July 21 meeting. As I said, we'll update all the board members on what occurs at the offline meeting. So making a motion to adjourn this to July 21.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you.
Seconded Stephanie Wasser.
Perfect. Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thanks, guys. We'll see you in a week in the morning, afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, under other business, we have a resolution. We are prepared to take action on DODIC second dwelling unit. This is a conversion of a dwelling unit and office, a mixed-use building at 4305 Albany Post Road. It will now become a two-family or two-dwelling unit building, each with one bedroom above and one bedroom below. Brad Will, the architect, is here tonight. He's the one who shepherded this through. We had extensive discussions and we had a public hearing where no one offered any comment. We kept it open for written comments for seven days. We received nothing. So Brad, do you have anything you want to add?
No, we're happy to be at this finish line so we can engage with the, hopefully start engaging with the building department.
Gosh, I bet.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your patience and for your clients. I believe this resolution is going to be introduced by Mr. Pickett.
I have the resolution. Resolution to grant site plan approval, DODIC second dwelling unit. Resolution 2021-03A, whereas, 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 11 times. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves the site plan and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Be it further resolved that the applicant is responsible for obtaining any permits required by other agencies, including but not limited to the Department of Transportation. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing the issuance of a building permit for the project, the applicant shall provide the zoning administrator with a PDF of the signed site plan.
There is second? I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Let me just add, Mr. Will, that the only condition basically that's being placed on this prior to pulling a building permit would be payment of all fees and escrows. So our consultants don't bill, say, for tonight or the last meeting. Those may not be in there. So what I ask you to do to make sure that that condition can be met is to ensure that there's sufficient escrow for their final bills. Victoria and Pete and Bonnie can probably give you an estimate if there's any other time they have. In other words, if the escrow is not sufficient, you have to wait to refill that. So if there's a way you can work with the consultants to make sure there's enough money left over for them for the final bill, that would be smart and behoove you moving this process along. Does that make sense?
Sure, I know that the owner has made several payments. So are we anticipating additional escrow charges?
I don't know. It's just for the time billed for tonight, basically. Which sounds small, but I don't know what the balances are, so we should just take a look. And Victoria, Pete?
Yeah, I'll be in contact with him. I'll let him know to anticipate that.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
I don't.
Yes, Pete?
No, never mind. I was just gonna say that I haven't been billing anything to it, so I'm not gonna have any bills.
Okay.
I'll work it out, Mr. Will.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia.
Walk him through it.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Brad, a pleasure working with you. Looking forward to it again at some point in the future.
As am I. Thank you all very much. Have a good meeting and a good week.
Good night. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is similar to DODIC. This is for the Duchess County SPCA addition. This has been workshopped, discussed. Projects have changed slightly, particularly there's no flat roof now on this new addition. We have a resolution prepared. Mr. Twitty, I believe, is here tonight, but basically this will allow the project to move forward. Peter, do you want to add anything?
No, just to say I appreciate everyone's kind of focus and getting through all this. Looking forward to moving on to the next step.
Thank you. I believe this resolution will be introduced by Vice Chair Dexter because of her familiarity with the site.
It is. Thank you so much. Resolution to grant site plan approval for the Duchess County SPCA addition. Resolution number 2021-02A. Whereas, 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 now therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants conditional site plan approval to the project as it on the site plan set and authorizes the chair or his authorized designee to sign the site plan set after compliance with the following conditions. One, payment of all fees and escrow. Two, revision of the site plan set to include the following note. The former clinic building shall not be reoccupied without site plan amendment approval from the planning board to review, among other things, parking. Three, approval by the Duchess County Department of Behavioral and Community Health, DCDBDH, for method of sewage disposal. Four, revision of the site plan set to show the septic tank and line into the existing sewer system, consistent with DCDBDH approval. Five, revision of sheet G000 to include a reference to the prior approval date and application number granting a special use permit to the facility. Six, revision of sheet C100 and C101 to label various miscellaneous buildings and wetland areas. Seven, revision of sheet C101 to indicate if lights will match existing lights and to state that Kelvins will be 3,000 or less. Be it further resolved that prior to the zoning administrator authorizing issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide the planning board with a PDF of the fully signed site plan set.
I'll second that. Brent Pickett?
Further discussion or Peter, do you have any questions about what you just saw?
No, I think I understand all of it. What process question? Basically. Can we go into the building department at this, you know, at this point or to start that review process?
Absolutely.
All right.
Start the review process, but you won't be able to pull a permit.
No, I understand. Okay.
I mean, these are pretty much minor revisions except for the Department of County, I mean, Department. By the way, there's an error in the resolution. It should be DC CH, not DH in both of those, but I think we can correct those as minor. It's Behavioral and Community Health. Yes, Community Health. So, but that's minor. We don't have to adjust it. So and if you have any questions about item number six, just speak to Bonnie about that, Ms. Franson. I think it's just like labeling buildings that are not labeled now, things like that. That's all. So. Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Peter, it's been a pleasure as well. I look forward to working with you in the future, too, and good luck out there at the SPCA.
Thank you all very much. Take care.
The next item on the agenda is a site plan waiver request. This would be to add electrical solar panels, I should say, to a roof. This is located in 8K Wood Place, which is still in the scenic statewide area of scenic significance. Wait, scenic area statewide significance. Sorry. We have a recommendation from the zoning administrator on this. Anybody have any questions or comments? It's an 8K Wood Place. If there were no trees between here and the river, it's possible you would see them from a very high elevation, not from the river. I should say from across the river. I believe this will be introduced by Ms. De Napoli.
Yes, and I woke up patina Stafford for a site plan waiver. Resolution 2021-19, whereas five times. Now therefore be resolved that the Town of Hyde Park Planning Board hereby waive site plan requirements with a file entitled Stafford regarding the specific request as received April 13, 2021 and as identified in the building permit application dated March 26, 2021 for this project.
Second that, Chris Oliver?
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is I need a vote to authorize me to send a comment letter to Town of Poughkeepsie regarding their amendment to zoning chapter 210. This would be signage in basically a district that only, that is strictly for Hudson Heritage, which you see under construction right now. And I want to thank Vice Chair Dexter because I was in my cynical mood when I read. But let's not bother to comment, but in truth, they were proposing letters that really are probably too high for a pedestrian area. They were 18 inches and that's kind of drastic for a walkable area. And Ann said, no, we should always comment. Even if they ignore, we should comment. And you're right, we should. Because I would want neighboring towns to say the same thing to us. Many eyes, you know, can improve it.
I appreciate.
Anyone, everyone had a chance to review it? I believe, yes. Okay. And making a motion authorizing that, yes.
I'd like to make that motion to authorize the chairman to send a comment letter to the Town of Poughkeepsie regarding an amendment to zoning chapter 210, signage in HRDD district.
And I will happily second it, Stephanie Wasser.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Now we have the approval of many, many sets of minutes. I forgot we didn't have all those. So first, may I get a resolution to approve the planning board meeting minutes from January 6, January 20, February 17, and March 3, 2021, where all board members were in attendance?
Well, I'm moving that for the first, we have different people moving it, but I'm happy to move it. Thank you. Stephanie Wasser.
And I'll second it, Diane De Napoli.
All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Motion carries. The next, I would need a motion to approve the planning board meeting minutes from February 3, where Mr. Oliver was absent, so he's going to have to abstain.
I'll make that motion. Brent Pickett?
I'll second that motion. And Weiser?
Thank you.
Favor?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver is abstaining. And we need a motion to approve the planning board minutes dated March 17, 2021, where Ms. Wasser was absent.
I'll make that motion, Chris Oliver.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion. And Weis?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Wasser is abstaining. Thank you. And now making a motion for, by the way, thanks, everybody, and thanks particularly Victoria and Pete. I know that was a long, lengthy first public hearing.
They're gone. How long?
No, I'm just, but we got what we wanted, which is we know Mr. Macho can clean the swell all the way up and that should help, again, the stormwater pond on the other side, plus make it look more aesthetically enhanced. So thanks for everyone's patience. Making a motion to adjourn.
Public hearing process works.
It does. I agree.
Thank you to Victoria for setting those rules, which I think was very helpful.
Actually, they're our bylaws that we voted on that will not read.
Reminder, the reminder is very helpful.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion. Brent Pickett?
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All the consultants who are still here. Thanks, Pete. Keep driving safely.
Good night, everybody.
Councilman Krepnik, thank you again for providing the resources and the time and talent to bring this to air.
My pleasure.